Six o'clock time call, September fourth, uh, meeting in the County County Commission to order. If you would stand please.
Good gracious, Heavenly Father, we come to you today and thank you for every blessing that you give us. And thank you for your precious love that you that you bestow upon us. Well, we actually met, Lord, touched courteously and healed me, Lord, and if you sit there, Lord, that you just lay your healing hand on him and as he gets up on this research trip, that can just like. Oh, we ask that you be with the chairman, everyone of us, Lord, as we're doing business for the county, Lord, that we do what you have us to do and keep an open mind and a prayerful heart. You give us what we've felt, Lord, each day, and just as I wish all these things, amen.
Amen in light, please.
Our political allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic of this state. One nation under God, indivisible, being just as strong.
Roll call, please.
Here.
Judy Shaw.
Here.
Karen Ashford.
Here.
Chris Singleton.
Here.
Eddie Mears.
Here.
Randy Gannon.
Here.
Crystal Alexander.
Here.
Tony Burnett.
Here.
Thank you, Chris.
Right, so five approved change agenda, I have no change.
Make a motion to approve agenda.
Second.
Make a motion to approve agenda, second any discussion. All in favor, right?
Aye.
All vote. Number six, consent and approve meeting minutes all seven twenty twenty-five and approve noders that are Catherine Bailey, Brittany Danielle Hickel, and Kristy Kate Katt.
Make a motion to approve both items on the agenda.
Make a motion.
Make a motion to approve both items, consent, uh, agenda and due second, if I have any discussion. All in favor, right?
Aye.
All vote. Right, just to number seven, election of chairman. Chairman of the commission. All open for non-nationals.
I make a motion, Gary Mitchell, big chairman.
Second.
Got a motion for Freddie Mitchell, big chairman, and any other non.
Make a motion, non-nationals, second.
Thank you.
Got a motion, non-nationals, seats, seconded.
Nathan Sanders.
Yeah.
Judy Shaw.
Yes.
Karen Ashford.
Yes.
Chris Singleton.
Yes.
Eddie Mears.
Yes.
Randy Gannon.
Yes.
Crystal Alexander.
Yes.
Tony Burnett.
Yes.
Thank y'all so much for, uh, trusting me. Well, I messed up. Y'all trivia with me. We did vote on both the seat nomination. All in favor of seat nominations.
Aye.
All vote. That was just, thank you, lady. Sorry about that, thank y'all for your trust in me after I messed up. Uh, and I, I, I appreciate it so much. Uh, right, number nine, public hearing request to rezone one one nine one zero Jim Cummings Highway from A one agriculture, uh, to C one commercial for proposed convenience store.
I've got two off going, Pat.
Uh. We skipped eight.
I am so wrong. It's okay. I just came right over. Sorry about that, let the chairman rotate. Done all four of the nominations.
Nominate again, second.
We really don't have to have second to the nomination, but that, that'd be fine.
Make a motion, nomination, please.
And motion, nomination, see, since the second to them, second to them, all in favor, right?
Aye.
All vote.
Nathan Sanders.
Yes.
Judy Shaw.
Yes.
Karen Ash.
Yes.
Chris Singleton.
Yes.
Eddie Mears.
Yes.
Randy Gannon.
Yes.
Crystal Alexander.
Yes.
Tony Burnett.
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, nine. Time for nine. All of the public hearing requests to rezone one one nine one zero Jim Cummings Highway from A one agriculture to C one commercial for proposed convenience store, uh, development is, I tell you what, is there anyone here that's speaking for? The reason.
I don't speak the advocate.
I think.
Hi.
Can you would come forward and say your name, please?
My name is Brandy Rochin, I'm not technically the applicant, I'm an applicant's wife, uh, applicant rushed to the tire shop because her tire is going well. But yes, I'm here, if that's good enough.
Why don't you?
Oh, um, yeah, so we bought the property, um, a little over a year ago on auction, um, just hoping to flip it real estate. We've done several things in Nashville and surrounding areas. Um, it's not showing very well. There's not been a lot of interest in it, it is on the market, uh, probably still. Uh, me and the husband got to talking and thinking, well, we can't keep sitting on it, so how about move the kiddos out to the country and open up a little quick stop.
Give back any questions?
Are you able to sell, uh, alcohol beverages there?
Oh, my, I'm just for me.
Oh, for them, sorry.
It's okay.
So you are aware that you can't sell alcohol there, right?
Um, that was not going to be our selling point out.
Okay.
They'd be me and the kiddos running it most ways, so it'd be their family.
Yeah. Calls a bunch. Who's the church?
We say quick stop, but, um, I'm thinking breakfast, lunch sandwiches, somewhere you can stop and grab a drink, smokes, if, you know, that's doable. We love doing auctions and going to auction and pilot auctions and things of that sort, it's kind of a hobby of my husband's, and we were thinking of some really fun things to do, like maybe bargain bins. Maybe have, maybe touch on less convenience store and more of a twist between quick stop and boutique-ish. It's, it's, a lot of things are turning and we just have a lot of fun.
So were you originally trying to sell it?
Yeah, yeah, probably, I mean, that's, that's what we, we've done the past several years, is purchase properties and auction, flip them.
Make a motion.
I know, uh, you really don't have a lot of room out in front, are you planning on trying to do anything like put gas pumps and stuff in?
Nothing to that much.
Right.
Nothing gas station.
Yeah, with, so you're not gonna put, planning on putting gas pumps in?
No, no.
Again, parking in front, it's very, very, even with some of the things that you were talking about, they're gonna do with. Uh, have any plans maybe to add in parking places, maybe around back, I know that lots, it's what, six tenths of an acre?
Yeah, it's not very big, so of course, you know, anything that we open, we want to plan and want it attracting oodles of people at all at once, you know. This is still really fresh for us as well. Yeah, everything, so now all the details of that store, you know, my husband knowledgeable as far as what can be done.
Maybe you'll be offering very good, maybe seven.
Um, I can't sit here and tell you if it got turned commercial and we got a bang in offer. I can't tell you that we wouldn't consider. Right now, we are considering of moving our whole family out from Nashville, out here. At the time, we've been in and out of here, you know, fixing the place up and doing the maintenance on the property and stuff, we've really come to enjoy the area, it's beautiful out here. Again, I said, we had three kids, but I'm dying to get out of the city. Been trying to talk the husband into moving out of the city for a while now. I definitely think more mile park isn't an idea than he is. But, uh, yeah, that's kind of a little hard on me.
So. Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
So a couple of questions, um, although it's limited in, um, the parking area and whatnot, um, it is a prime location, right on the main highway. Now you said, um, you were thinking of maybe making it combined of boutique and convenience store things, um. What are, I guess, what are some of your mains of, when they said we're gonna be alcohol, I guess, or what's gonna kind of be the main attraction?
Um, I would think breakfast and lunch, like a place to grab a good sandwich. Come across whatever else we might have.
You also mentioned there's a maintenance of the property, so, uh, is, is that coming along well, like what would be an anticipated closing date? Sorry, opening date?
Um, that is something else, I mean, that we would be, it's sometime after the first of the year. I don't know about moving the kids during the holidays, because we will be living on the. The first of the year.
What? Thanks, man. Is, or anyone here speak against? The rezone.
Are we allowed now?
Yeah, you can speak against it. Yes, I'm sorry, that's, that's way, if you would come forward, uh, come up here. Say your name. Thank y'all.
My name's Elizabeth Parker, I live in that area too, and where I don't have anything against a quick mark, just my concern is if it's on commercial. Uh, everything else is around their agricultural, safety wise on the highway, you've got Ivy Bluff Road coming in there, people having to stop and slow down, and everything else is residential around there. So I just have a little bit of a safety concern for the traffic. And then if it, um. They, it was on commercial and they had to sell a couple of years, then they're having control of what comes back in. So if you're okay with quick mark, if somebody else wants to come in later, if it's on commercial, then you really don't have control of what comes in later. Those are my concerns.
Thank you, lady. Take care, one night.
Say something. Right in the neighborhood, I live in the area, I live on Ivy Bluff Road, the, uh. The front, if they want to make it to a little store, there is no parking. If there was five cars there, they would be on the road. So I have to take a left, you also have to watch the traffic coming from Murkisburg and the traffic behind you to slow down. And then you've got this car lock right here, you gotta make sure they're out of the way before you can even turn left. It, I mean, there's enough wrecks on the road now that he and I may drop, or honestly, but it's a, it's a, a bad location in this day and time with the way out. And there's just, there's not enough room there for vehicles, especially if you have somebody that pulled a tractor in there with a combine or something like this, you know? You don't have any space, there ain't no space at all. So if they have to make more parking space, they would be behind that building in their yard, because I think that's all theirs, that, that's what they own up there. Because I think on both sides and in the back, it's almost, yeah, so there would not be any space there to enlarge that property.
Thanks, man. And I'm gonna be fair, bitch, you have anything to add, sir? Like your, what, yeah, do you have anything that, that you'd like to say or?
Well.
Just say your name, please. Say your name and, and.
Uh, my ex, Kyle Ludman, and he's there, he's a lot of parking spots, we can make that, uh, more parking spots, but got enough room to make a bigger. And I don't think we even had a lot of traffic, like, gonna be like six, four at a time in the store, you know? There probably gonna be two at a time, it's not like it's gonna be a big store, so everybody's gonna go at the same time. I don't think it will be, we'll have, we'll move to the back, it's gonna be a family store. We're gonna put up small restaurant, sell, pull from my contract, it's not a lot, it's a proposal, it's not a big store, nothing big, something that can sustain our family.
Thanks, sir. Anybody else? Right, I'll close the public hearing. Next, we'll move to number ten, public hearing proposes amendments to the County County zoning and building code resolution to revise the fee schedule by redefining. Where footage calculations for commercial, industrial, and multifamily building permit. Uh, anybody in here just speak for. If you would, please, sir.
Uh, in the recent, uh, ever showing a people's action in regard to SRM, there was a legitimate concern about. Zoning compliance fee. The investment per square foot of two ninety-five per foot. May I ask you now, I'm not able to read my notes.
Yes. Right.
My answer, you can say that.
Okay.
Residential zoning compliance fee is based on the added facilities tax model of heated or conditioned square footage. This is a amendment, is a clarification of square footage measurement for commercial, industrial, multifamily space. For example, the square footage of heated is the area of a building which will use. To be used as student computation. For, used to calculate residential and apartment building areas. Square footage of square for operational areas, often outdoors, which is used to determine production, manufacturing, warehouse, and product explain. Used to calculate industrial, it is best example, she was calculating industrial areas such as quarries and lumber mills. Square footage retail is area intended for the display, storage, and sales of retail products or services. Also, this may be included outdoor, semi outdoor areas used for general merchandise. Used to calculate areas such as building supply, car locks, and general merchandise. The effort here is to get better than the official, what's square footage is already. Fees given.
Any questions from Mr. David, though? Playing use of it, I mean. Okay.
I have, I have a question on this, uh, what, what is the impact of changing the fees? Does it? Simplify it down for me for, for someone building a home, does, does this increase or reduce fees for someone wanting to build a home?
It has no impact on somebody building a home, it's actually commercial and those people, a whole family, which would be apartment.
Okay.
Any other questions? Say. Anybody against it? Like to speak against? Alright. Close public hearing. Right, just to number eleven, public commentary concerning agenda. Go on this side, anybody got a comment on agenda? About here. Over here. Close public commentary. Right, number twelve, old business title, aye, I, I have none. Thirteen, considerate, can you rezone property at one one nine one zero Jim Cummings Highway from A one agriculture to C one commercial for proposed convenience store development? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
To approve?
To approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll say a motion.
Got a second, can I, discussion, please?
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I have a question, um, you guys talked about, um, breakfast and lunch as primary to the meals, um, is that more of a, uh, sit-down type meal? Kind of like a Shoney's or Crackerbell breakfast, or just kind of a biscuit and?
A grab and go.
Grab and go type thing? Okay, so that, so that wouldn't, the food crowd, if it was approved, that wouldn't bring in a large crowd where they would be sitting sometimes? And lunch, kind of the same thing, just more finger foods type thing?
Yes.
My concern is because. When, uh. She was speaking. And, you know, she was saying that she, they, you know. Kind of like they're professional flippers. Uh, is, once it's turned commercial, will it potentially be sold? And I didn't really get a full. Understanding as far as. What the store was really gonna be. If I'm making any sense. Like, did anybody, uh, grant, was it gonna be a?
There is no restriction on sale, like you said, it can't be, that, first off.
Yeah.
No, one is C one, it's a.
It's C one, you can't do anything about it.
Different.
And, and, I mean, to my understanding, that's what they do, they're flippers. That's my concern.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman.
I have another question for, um, you might remember, what, was that not a convenience store a long time ago?
Oh, yeah.
Or I think Midway Bridge.
Nope.
Midway, Midway Road.
Long time ago. I don't need shoulder age.
I think it was a convenience store prior to any, the. So, zoning and stuff.
But, but it was a convenience store.
Yeah.
Is the, is the property across the street commercial?
It's actually industrial.
What's that? We have an industrial property across the street and then county owned property directly across the street.
It's fire department, mid, midway, fire department.
Okay.
Yeah. What about the business on the corner, what do you see it? On the other corner. No, no.
Trucking, trucking.
Is it industrial?
Mr. David, do you know the answer to that?
I do not.
Mr. David, no? This is the property we're talking about. Yeah. This is the property that's. Yeah. Mr. Mears adds, what was it, it's a, another property?
Brown Trucking Company, right?
Just before you get to the church.
Church, yeah, Brown Trucking Company.
Or Trucking, I believe.
Yeah, is that commercial? Commercial, okay. So this is not spot zoning. Yeah.
What is the, uh, what is the amount of land? What is the size of this lot?
Six tenths of an acre.
Okay. Uh, now, I'm not saying anything for or against anything about it, but I know with other properties, the size of it has been greater than, you know, has come to us about rezoning. Been, you know, five, ten, you know, whatever acre properties, with something to this size, I, I think during this, we need to consider. You know, yes, we consider the future, but it's six tenths of an acre, so what are you really? As far as going C one and never going back, what is implications there, like something that's small? You know, we're, it, it's gonna limit the scope of any kind of major business going in there if it's ever sold. And it's not, you know, being a, being for or against this, it's just something I think we ought to say out loud and consider.
Yeah.
Because other, other properties that have come up for this zoning have, have been large properties that would, you know, there could be huge implications of what could come in versus something that's a six tenth of an acre.
And I understand what Mr. Crystal can, I'm like you, neither for nor against, but six tenths of an acre, yeah, somebody, they buy it, it goes to market, and we say it's commercial, but they sell it. Whoever buys it does have an option, if they see that they can't make anything out of this with si- six tenths of an acre, they can bring it back. Take it to residential, being residential. That's always enough. Yes, yeah, so, you know, it's kind of, and, and I understand everybody's point. The only reason I'm making this point, this passed the planning commission unanimously, but it had no opposition at that time in the planning commission meeting. Just, everybody didn't know that too.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Uh, in the event this business is overwhelmingly successful, or, um, they sell it in another business, is, um, I'm thinking specifically of where the Dollar General store is on the Coffee County side, there at Matt Hill. Uh, that was a terrible intersection. And that being a state highway, um, would we, as a governing body, would we be able to approach the state and say, say, hey, please do a study, there could be some potential traffic concerns? Or is that a state thing? Because I know all of a sudden I went to Manchester one day and there was a work being done at, at Matt Hill on that area. So is that something that the state looked at? Or could we say, hey, you know, we've got citizens concerned, we've got our own concerns here, could we get something like that done?
Alright.
Then they may have to apply for a, a, a state. That may result in such a study, but we're not compelled to.
Okay. Thank you.
And has anybody measured that we know how far this is from church? That's it. Going to be far enough to prevent alcohol.
Yeah, it would be, it can't.
The paper said. Hundred the car, hundred the car.
Two thousand feet.
Forty. So they can't sell it.
We were harshly able to calculate, we were actually able to calculate it had the plan efficiency, it is within two thousand. So they would not be.
Okay.
Thank you, Dave.
I just have another point to consider, um, the minute I saw it on the agenda and the location, I immediately, I immediately saw dollar signs. And while, let's, this thing tells us something later here in a minute, while we're in good shape financially, and I see this as a revenue opportunity, um, you know, while they've got multiple options, um, that there's, there's dollar sign that can come in, especially if food is being served, um, you know, quick food on the way because it's either going to the marathon on down fifty-three or it's going to Marcus Rowan, everybody gets to work. So I mean, something to consider, um, whether it's for the working crowd passing through or the boutique type thing, um, you know, the seniors or whoever might be passing through there. But with nothing else really on that highway, um, besides the dollar store, it can bring in revenue, I'm. I'd like to see something other than nothing.
Nathan Sanders.
Yeah.
Judy Shaw.
No.
Karen Ashford.
I'm a little bit split on this. I'd like to see businesses here, I mean, that would help our county. On the other hand, if, if they did resell it, then it's out of our hands, what goes in there, so I'm kind of torn on which one go on this. I want to say no. No.
Yes.
Eddie Mears.
No.
Brady Gannon.
Yes.
Crystal Lully Sanders. No. Tony Burnett.
No.
Three. Against five.
Five.
Having five against, yeah, five against.
Five against, three, uh, guesses, uh, so we fight. All right. Number fourteen, consideration of proposed amendments to the County County zoning and building codes of resolutions to revise the fee schedule by redefining square footage calculations for commercial, industrial and multifamily building permits. I have a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Thank you, John. Any discussion? Call, Rob.
Yes.
Judy Shaw.
Yes.
Karen Ashford.
Yes.
Brett Singleton.
Yes.
Eddie Mears.
Yes.
Brady Gannon.
Yes.
Crystal Lully Sanders.
Yes.
Tony Burnett.
Yes.
Number sixteen, approval of resolution twenty twenty-five dash twelve, supporting tourism and national grant application and committing local magic funds. Uh, what this is, we, we, we applied for, for, applying for, for the same thing, it's, it's a stage venue, stage built at fairgrounds and a, a music venue that would support, uh, food trucks and, uh, like, uh, once a month, uh, venue for different kinds of music, all kinds of genre or, or whatever it is. And that's what it is, it's magic funds and I, I believe it, if this is up to a hundred thousand dollars, tourism and national. We didn't get it last time, we got very dependent. Motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Your motion to approve. Second.
How would this affect, will this be better than putting the CDAs over here, Greg?
Well, for us it will be. As a county. There's no control of seizure part. Or the stuff. Now, I'm sure we, I'm sure they give us access. Or, or whatever.
I mean, will we offer more with this than what they have over there? What, what more will we be offering? Hookups and correct power and?
It'll have, it'll have powers in the stage, the, the stage will be for, like I said, music venues, it can be used for a beauty contest or whatever you want to use it for. I'd like to have it here, something like Warren County's got, uh, and other places around state where they have a venue, a music venue where people come to play and set up food trucks and Warren County's got a nice, I don't know if you've ever been, uh, music in park or not, but it's, it's a nice deal. It's bright, it's just for revenue stream to bring us exactly.
As far as like you said, beauty pageants, I know they've been over here, the city part, then all of a sudden now we're building platforms back here in front of the courthouse again. Would people really prefer to have these things? It seems like the front of the courthouse is kind of been a venue that they choose more.
Just get over there, I see it. I don't know if adding another beauty contest outside, you know, yeah.
Yeah, Miss Can Can.
Really? Oh, yeah.
What was that over there?
Webber Grams.
Webber Grams.
I'll say as a pageant said, um, there is a lot of space for something like that. The high school was generous enough to offer their, um, whatever it's called, the ag building back there, it has a small stadium, but it was not adequate. The art center is, and I'm not speaking derogatory, but the other venues are expensive. With the courthouse, the platform has to be built and with that, used to be inmate labor that's donated and doesn't have any fun. So from that standpoint, this would be something helpful. The last time it's had over here, it said it was lack of power, weather, um, it, it's not feasible. I won't say it'll never be over there again, but it, it not lose out as a first option.
Really, a open venue like this is gonna be, but basically you're saying if we build it, they'll come. But it's not gonna be inside with it, the cover itself, it's gonna be right there where that wood platform is now.
The stunt, it, it, yeah.
Will it be hooked like electricity? I'm just kind of going through things, it's there, like the tractor pull, it, it won't affect the, all right, will it give them access to electrical hookups?
They'll have electrical hook up on it, yeah.
All right, what about like a fair, a carnival or whatever?
Maybe.
Cause it seems like that's one of the big things that everyone's kind of ran into is have to haul in generators. Will it have adequate hookups?
There.
For something like that.
Right now, they're attached with electricity over. We've got two, two hundred amp services at the other end toward Macbrooke Street, and there's also two, two hundred amp services up here toward where the old concession stand is, on the same.
Yeah.
Yeah. So what, what, what will happen there is will come from that two hundred amp service that, uh, one of them two hundred amp services that serve toward the concession stand and hook that in and hook the electric to the state.
So it really gives somebody three points. It'll just gonna add a point where maybe they could hook up where they don't have to haul in a generator or anything like that.
Mr. Chairman, if I could speak to that, um, speaking with a different hat, um, when I've seen generators, it's been, and I've been to every single thing that's there, that's been the line stuff for show. And that is generally those people, um, either stay over not, they are much further away from the power source. Um, some of that is the rescue squad, um, helping with the handicap parking and just parking in general. The, the, the big ones, yes, but they're, they're running probably something more than this will be, they're running fancy stuff that is usually for the weekend. And of course, there's a lack of water supply that, that used to be done, so they are, they've got generators that are running up in water. So, uh, filtered water and all types of fancy stuff, at least for that particular event. I don't know about other events, maybe they have generators there, but, um, I know from the things that I have been around and over there, just traditionally talk about adequate power source and that.
But this is just a motion to.
This is to apply.
Just a.
I have to have it to apply.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. I have.
It's kind of long.
Yeah, and I'm gonna tell you, you gotta watch your carnage man. Cause the carnage will come right here and, and they'll, they'll jerk wire out, I'm talking about make it hot. They'll, they'll wire it red, you know, two hundred amp. Right? Stuff they really runs a lot of amps, so you gotta kind of keep an eye on them and make them.
Just asking, when this does come, if we do approve this and it does come back around, it's gonna be thirty thousand dollars. And what am I, do I really need to spend that thirty thousand dollars on this? Or is there something else by that time I need to spend it on? Could utilize it on something else? Actually, now they're asking questions.
So, Mr. Chairman, if we, if, if we're awarded the grant, would there not be some sort of proposal that would come back for this body as far as the specifics of it and maybe plans drawn and that sort of thing? Or get the grant and go with it?
Uh, yes, but you know, I guess this is, is committing, to be quite honest, this is committing the, of the funds and they won't make you take it. They won't make you take none of your grants. But if you, if you, if you, a lot of times you put in firm, you don't take them, then you're out. They're not gonna give you that.
I, I guess I'm gonna be more specific. For example, um, one of the things it talks about is, uh, a permanent outdoor amphitheater at County County Fairgrounds. So if we're awarded this grant, um, would this body see, uh, what this outdoor amphitheater would look like?
Yes.
Okay, we would see that and have to prove that.
A, a, a matter, you would see it, yes, there, there's a drawing, there's a drawing of it, uh, that's already drawn up by engineers and, uh, all of it. And I can get that to you for quick. If you'd like to see it, I mean, but it's very competitive.
Somebody's gonna be.
They will. They will be. Basically, it's, 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 it's a, it's a venue that has the, uh, ability to bring in a lot of tax revenue. It has that ability to bring in tax revenue and it also is the ability to get a hundred thousand per third.
Mr. Chairman, um, if this goes all the way through as far as the grant, the building, is, is it your office that still, uh, is hold reservations or does that people contact to say they want to have an event there? Say, this is just for example, but say, uh, a smaller version of Bonnaroo, they contact your office?
Yes.
And say, we want to have a music, okay?
Yes.
So we still have some, or I guess all to say so, and what would be held there and what would not?
Sure. I've got a motion, but not a second.
Second.
You got a second? Do we have some? It's been so long. Call.
Nathan Sanders.
Yes.
Judy Shaw.
Yes.
Karen Ashford.
Yes.
Brett Singleton.
Yes.
Eddie Mears.
Yes. Yes.
Crystal Lully Sanders.
Yes.
Tony Burnett.
Yes.
All four question periods.
Thank you, I hope we get it, but I, you know, who knows? It's very competitive. Uh, next sixteen, approval of appointment of Thad Rains and Kendall Smith to the board of zoning of fields. Now, I want to say something about this, it is very, very, very hard to get somebody to serve. And it is a very, very, very important position. It has become more important, uh, uh, as the days go by, I think David Ross will agree with that. That is very important. So I take it very serious when I make a recommendation for somebody on, on, on any of VZA is very.
Make a motion to afford Mr. Rains and Mr. Smith to the VZA.
Got a motion to appoint, got a second. Any discussion?
Sanders.
Yeah.
Judy Shaw.
Yes.
Karen Ashford.
Yes.
Brett Singleton.
Yes.
Eddie Mears.
Yes.
Brady Gannon.
Yes.
Crystal Lully Sanders.
Yes.
Tony Burnett.
Yes.
And number seventeen, I've got some good news. And, uh, thank goodness, got a call the other day and, uh, we have, County County has been awarded, uh, the three star grant for the community center renovation in the amount two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that's a hundred percent, that's no man. It's a hundred percent money. I'm, I'm taking that for granted, I, 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 I just wanted to follow. So. It was, uh, UCDD helped us, helped me write it, uh, and, and we sent all credit and they were, were awarded. It went from fifty thousand last two years, two years ago, it took one hundred and fifty this time. We was awarded fifty thousand two years ago for the Cannibal Park. Two fifty some that this year. Yeah, it's always been like fifty, they've upped the game to fifty or so. But other than that, I just wanted to announce that to y'all. Two hundred and fifty thousand, it's gonna be used to renovate the bathrooms over there, make them eighty-eight session. It'll also paint inside the gym, do some work on the, uh, the parking.
We get reimbursed for the roof.
Do what then?
Can we use some of this as reimbursement for the roof?
I think so. But that's a good try. That's a good try. But one good thing is the, of the, the roof came from, uh, Big. Yeah, that's when you. He paid. All night. All right. Number eighteen, Finance Department.
Number two is, um, well, we don't know about that broad grant and ready grant, um, that's to add that to the budget. We've got the contract now and then the second one is Roy Sullivan's grants, you know, or like multi-year grants, so they can balance on a couple of them. And, um, alcohol and drug, that's just correcting, I put that in the wrong place, so I'm just correcting. So that's number two.
It's just kind of moving, moving money where it's supposed to be. Make a motion to approve BA twenty-five slash twenty-six dash two in County General Court.
Thank you. Got a motion to set BA twenty-five, late twenty-six dash two, any discussion? I will say that one failed, there was another grant, that's one percent.
Library's gonna benefit from that.
All in favor, Ryan? All opposed.
Okay, the number three is, uh, you know, the agricultural grant that Greg got, this is the balance of that grant, so I'm just adding that to the current budget so we can spend the rest of it.
It was left over and we're just moving it into this. Make a motion to approve BA twenty-five slash twenty-six dash three.
Thank you.
Any discussion? We got a motion, BA twenty-five, twenty-six dash three, all in favor, Ryan? All opposed.
And the last one is for the Highway Department and this is just. And the last one is for the Highway Department, and this is just increasing her, the mineral severance for her MOE. Cause she has to submit a, she has to do a five-year average on her revenue every year, and, and she didn't budget enough. She had to go back and increase it, so that is increasing it to make the MOE.
Make a motion to approve BA twenty-five slash twenty-six dash four for the Highway Department.
Second.
Got a motion to accept BA twenty-five, later twenty-six, dash four, huh? And second, any discussion? All in favor, Ryan?
All right.
All opposed.
I hate to beat you to dead, whore. SRM, you through though?
Oh, that's gonna explain the support.
Okay, go ahead.
Mike, did Judy didn't give her?
He's a big head of all for sure.
Okay, this first number one spreadsheet that I have here. Just showing you what the fund balance has been in all the funds for the last three years. If you look at the first column, the one oh one is County General Fund. And we ended this year with four point three million, which is, is good. We were, uh, it decreased seven hundred and forty thousand. One of the reasons for that was the ambulance service patient receipts came in at a hundred and ten thousand more than we were expecting because, you know, like SWAT sweeps companies, yeah. And then, um, for sales tax was a hundred and eighty-three thousand more than last year in the general fund. Sold the Water Street property, so that's, you know, a few reasons why that is, is better than this year. Um, if you go on over to the schools under one forty-one, they were able to increase their fund balance almost two million dollars. And, um, they, a lot of, a lot of the reason they've been able to build up a little fund balance is because the S R, of course, that's over with, but that has helped them build a, a fund balance. But also their sales tax was seven hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars better than it was previous year. And they, their test of money was about half, over a half million more than they got the year before. So that, that has helped them put some more money back in their fund balance. And are there any other ones that y'all have any questions about? I put a total out to the right hand, on the right hand side too. It's one seventy-seven, that's where we paid off that loan, so that's why that one dropped.
Budget Committee, I think we'll see.
Yeah. Questions, okay. So the next sheet is the cash flow. And of course, this is the time of year where, you know, balances are a little bit lower until. Perfect tax starts coming in, but in general, they all, you know, pretty good.
Diane, is this as of August thirty-one?
Mm-hmm, yeah. Questions? I know I don't need all time to look at it.
This may be redundant on what he just did, year over year, uh, that. I guess where are we, or is that what's out on this party page?
Year over year, as far as.
Uh, August thirty-one last year, or August thirty-one this year.
So on the cash flow, you can see, well, we're like, where we were in August last year.
Oh.
Yeah, and the year before, I use.
I got you, sorry.
Yeah.
This middle section.
Yeah.
Do you know off top here, maybe in here, that's, but how did we end up at the end of the year last year on the sales tax? Do you remember?
Like the total?
Mm-hmm. If you don't, that's okay.
I can't remember the number.
I just, I could look, I wouldn't care like.
I can't remember all the numbers.
Come on, you're a kid. I didn't remember, look at it.
I looked at it ten minutes ago.
What did it mean on what you've sent us for the last minute?
Well, for last year?
Yeah.
I said, I did email y'all June.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll be on that.
I'll go back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Of course, this percentage spreadsheet, some of these are a little bit high, but it's because of purchase orders we have in the system. That factors into that number. Like for example, in, um, Highway Department, they have got the bridge project, so we've got purchase orders already in there, and that's why it's so much, yeah.
Diane, back enough to the cash flow analysis. Sir, it's hard.
Very last, last one?
Yeah. Am I reading that right? They're sitting on three hundred and twenty.
So that's like, that's their commissary fund, but they had, had to stop the commissary because then they have to flush and all that stuff down the toilet. They cut it out, but they do have three hundred and twenty, and he wants to use that if we ever build a new jail, he would thought this could pay for the architect fees. I think that's what we had to use it for, so.
Before we discussed in the Field Committee meeting.
Yeah. What's it, try out on the recovery? Um, there's a updated list of grants. Hopefully, we'll add to it. Then the summary financial, schools and highways are included in here because as you know, Douglas and Neil always enter those numbers, they, they're gone. Technically, they'll, they'll be back, but next week Douglas and Neil will be here to teach Regina and Andrew how to do it, so I didn't wanna try to do that. So that is all I have.
We can confidently say that finance for the county is in good shape.
Now, Randy, you can make your.
I made my over, you're not getting, we'll get it. Um, SRM. Is, I know, of course, I, I've got Facebook and things pop up here and there. Steel, um, shaking people houses, um, the dust, uh, everything, is there anything that can be done? Kind of at least help out these citizens in the fifth district, cause they seem, they seem to be the ones that kind of taking the brunt of this.
Do they not have to wash down the road? I mean, they're, I see them run a street sweeper, but they're not running one with water that I've ever seen.
No, it got run over here while they, their street sweeper.
I mean, I, I thought they're, part of their agreement there was they were gonna run one of ones that has water on it so that it keeps the dust down.
That agreement fell through.
And did they not ever put in a, uh, their wash pit?
Uh, that went away whenever, six hundred and forty-three thousand dollars.
So all that went away?
Yeah. There was no deal. What's the current status, part of the deal with the six hundred and forty-three thousand?
Were those, those stipulations?
I think they were in that, wouldn't they, Greg? Those stipulations, the wheel wash and all that.
Well, it was talk, so they, 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 they really never. They really never conceded to put a wheel wash in. But they did concede that they would clean the road, unlike even, I mean, they're just making do it.
Yeah, all they do is make dust with one of those, you know, is there nothing that we can do to encourage them to use one?
I can contact and tell them to get it made, but as far as that road, they're a state road, so.
Is there any talks or anything about that whole deal? Is it just on the table?
Right now, it's on the. That's all.
There is no talk, it's just on the table.
But.
If they went ahead and started mining that extra thirty acres, they're the one, would anybody know about if they are or not?
No idea, Dave, Dave's aware.
I'm blaming. So we're just, it's kind of at a standstill.
I can't call them, get something, get a lot of to, and ask them to step it up, so.
Yeah, I think, you know, any kind of encouragement, I, I know, you know, I, I can assume the answer will get, but any kind of encouragement. And, you know, just to be in their ear as much as we can, as big of an aggravation it is to the people of the county, I think wouldn't be that big of an aggravation to that company.
Your duty.
I, I've worked for, for different companies over my working career. It's not that hard to run a street sweeper that has water on it to keep dust down. It shouldn't be that much of a inconvenience to a company that size to try to buy a little bit of goodwill with the things that they do over there.
So there's been, there's just nothing happening on that, no negotiations.
Not yet.
We don't even know if they're, went ahead and started mining the thirty, thirty acres, so.
No, and you know what? And you have authority to run to dawn their rock? Wouldn't that be a little?
Is it not close enough to the river? Is it not close enough?
It is not an ex, it is a excavation, not even, so it stays above the rim, it don't go below ground, mining the ground.
But the pollution they're putting in the river, we don't have something.
Be that.
Be that standard.
Yeah.
Anything that, anything that I've ever heard has been thrown out, they're okay. Through the, through the state. Just like, you know, they got approved for that one day before all of our zoning restrictions and stuff went into place.
My understanding is that they are, that the state is looking at that overburdening, a big mountain over. Big.
Mm-hmm.
They are looking at that, they think that, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that they think that's good.
Which tells me that probably mining that other area. But I don't know.
They opened one in the gap canyon.
No.
They opened one in the gap canyon.
Mm-hmm.
They've opened one and I, process the second one.
They get signed into the first second one, yeah.
The county power, uh, what was determined is what I'm told is, is, uh, and I know it's run red here, but, uh. What, what I'm told was determined about that situation is that their grandfather did before that power relief act.
Kind of like.
Kind of like we got here.
Well, gap canyon, that's no stopping either.
Nothing, so that, they, they tried, the power relief act.
Well, we need to figure out what to do next, sir, cause they've not been proved, they don't need to be mining the rest. So, we still have that term, can we get that checked on?
Yeah, yeah, we got one, we got us.
Just, I think we need to, cause I'm getting questions by, and I'm glad Randy reminded me.
Sure, we can check it out.
You know, they were going to talk to the state about moving up from the bridge, putting across.
And never heard, ain't heard nothing about that, and I don't see them doing any more work on that opening, they.
Yeah, there is, I think the state stopped them because you already have one of those tiles or whatever right there, and the state stopped. I don't know.
The state will stop you when you go to looking about putting up without going to them by permit.
And it's, there's something there, but I don't know, I guess it's dangerous for a reason, but nobody knows.
If, if it's not if, with as many citizens that are being affected in the fifth district as far away from that side, I can't imagine that the art center is not freaking havoc. Could we contact them and say, hey, let's work together on something, cause they, they seem to have a lot of, uh, connections and get a lot of attention from. Like I, I would, I, I just find it hard to believe that their building is not being affected.
It is, it, it, it is.
And what gets me, you still have people building. You got a bank going. Uh, there's things there that were built. When that mine, when that, they were blowing the side of that air off, and they're still building.
Yeah. The art center is being affected, and I had a call from the art center, and they were very concerned about that, uh, the other, uh. In and out, the exit entrance they was gonna put, the other entrance they was gonna put up there, I was very concerned about that.
What was their concern? Cause I mean, that would pull it away from that bridge and. And you already have a spot there to come in.
I guess their concern was traffic. What, what they, what SRM was trying to do was, was do away with having to come out, turn right, go up, turn left, maybe you turn back to burp.
Just straight across, which, that makes sense, but.
Yeah. I want your time motion, Mr. Chairman.
My motion?
Or you done?
One other thing, Budget Committee, let us know if there's anything, any of the members on the Budget Committee. That you want to look at for next year, this next budget. It's gonna be here before we know it, and I'd rather start right now hearing comments and stuff and even let Diane know. Before we get into this thing, because I have, it's gonna be an interesting budget, so. But I'd rather hear it upfront before we get into this situation, we'll know where we're going. Where we need to start, when we do start. Uh, but I would appreciate it if all members of the commission did that, with the Budget Committee, that's it. Make a motion to adjourn.
I got a motion to adjourn from the committee, so Andrew, how about a second, can you, Randy?
Yes, sir.
I got a second, I think I'm all in, like, right?
All I ask for the budget stuff is to look at the increase of the sales tax at the schools and kids. I have a lot of things unmade, that's why they want to put the sales tax, so the, the school's budget didn't.